Good evening. Welcome to the Candidate Forum for District 33 School Board Candidates. And we welcome this evening Rita Balgman, Kathleen Frye, and Jeanette Hernandez. All the candidates were invited to participate, but regrettably Tom Doyle responded that he was unable to attend. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters, serving West Chicago. My name is Pam Zimmerman, your moderator this evening. I live in Winfield, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in the forums this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil/civic discourse. If there's controversy, our interest is to bring balance and fairness to the discussion and ensure that all parties are heard. Providing forums is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so citizens can become better informed about the issues facing their community and become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. The format tonight is a candidate forum, and it's not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts, and their responses reflect their own views and opinions, and refrain from commenting on the views of other candidates. The League of Women Voters is not responsible for the accuracy of the statements made by candidates. It's the responsibility of the public, news media, opposing candidates, to fact-check statements made by candidates if that would be necessary. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. All candidates attending tonight have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. These rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order with their one-and-a-half-minute opening statements. Then, we will alternate the order in which they answer questions for one-and-a-half minutes. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-and-a-half-minute closing statement. Members of the League will be acting as timers, there they are this evening, and I will enforce the time limits. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will just ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. We've received a multitude of questions from the community in advance of tonight's forum. To ensure questions represent a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members from the League have reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness, applicability to all candidates, and to avoid duplication. We'll do our best to read as many questions as we can within the timeframe of tonight's forum. And you may have noticed that we have some guest questioners here this evening. This is a little bit of a departure for the League, but we have some students from Lehman Middle School who are also going to be some of the questioners this evening. So we'll alternate questions, and they're going to help me out with this forum tonight, so we're glad they're here. We're grateful to those of you in the community who have taken time to learn about the candidates before casting your vote by attending or watching candidate forums. For those in attendance this evening, we ask you to listen attentively, turn off your phones and electronic devices, avoid commenting or disrupting others during the forum, and refrain from applause until the end of the forum. Finally, I want to say how appreciative we are of the candidates, who are not only willing to serve in office, but have agreed to be here tonight to share their ideas and their goals. So, we're going to begin in alphabetical order. So, Candidate Balgman, you have one-and-a-half minutes for your opening statement.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rita Balgman. I'm a parent. I currently have four kids in the district, ranging from kindergarten to seventh grade. Professionally, I'm a researcher, and I also currently sit on the board. I'm running for the school board because I'm passionate about our district, and I want to be part of the work to drive change and bring about success. In the four years I've been on the board, we've gone through some really big changes. We've hired a new superintendent, adopted a new strategic plan, and set five-year goals, implemented a new literacy curriculum, navigated a pandemic, made infrastructure improvements, and so much more. But there's still a lot we have to do. The pandemic had a significant impact on our students. Our academic achievement, while already low, fell even further, exacerbating achievement gaps. Kids forgot how to do school and interact with others. Since I've been on the board, we've implemented multiple things to try to address these, including lowering class sizes in the primary grades, increasing the staff that supports students, and more. We're at the point where we are expecting to see these efforts to start showing results. I think we need to set high expectations for everyone, from the superintendent down to the students. We have to provide differentiated instruction to meet every student where they are at, and provide the support they require, ensure that every student can be successful. I also think we need to continue to work to empower our teachers and make sure they are confident in their abilities to guide students to success. And I very much want to be part of this work to address these issues and so many more.
Thank you very much. Okay, Candidate Frye, for your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Frye. I'm a mother here in District 33. I have a third grader, a first grader, and a preschooler. I work full-time. I am also married to a police officer in the local surrounding areas. Some of my things that I want to work towards is the safety in our school district, more communication with our school district, and with our parents and our teachers, and just staff alone, and just work towards buttering the relationships that we have in our district. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And finally, Candidate Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Jeanette Hernandez. I have two, I have three kids. I have a nine-year-old and a six-year-old. They're both in the dual program. And then I have an eleventh-old-month baby. Professionally, I used to work for District 94, where is where I got a lot of feedback from parents. I have lived in West, well, I lived in West Chicago all my life, so it was really, it was a different perspective when you work there and you see everything behind the scenes, and you're able to acknowledge the problems that are going on. And when, as a parent, I could see stuff, but when I was working as a staff member, I got to see there's a lot of flaws. And there's a lot of things that we have to work on as a community. And that's the reason why I decided to run, because I feel like there's a lot of unheard voices that we really, I really want to be the voice of. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all these opening statements. So, as I mentioned, we're going to alternate the questioning. So we'll begin with the first question with Ms. Frye. And that question is, "How is your background, skills, and experience prepared you to be an effective member of the District 33 School Board?"
My background is actually in sales and customer service and listening to people. I have been working with the district as far as issues that there have been and bringing to light stuff that I think needs to be looked at. So, it's just... You're funny, you're really funny. So yeah, so my background is just, I work with people, and I listen to people, and I will find ways to solve problems whichever way I need to go.
Thank you. Candidate Hernandez, same question.
Yeah, when I worked for District 94, I got to work in the Student Services Department, where we got to see a lot of the community needs. So I worked with families that were going through McKinney-Vento, and that's where I realized that in our demographics sadly, we have a lot of families who are going through a lot of hardships. And it's sad, but I feel that if all of us come together and we look at all, you know, everything that we can do and all our resources, I think, I think my knowledge that I have, I think I could help the board.
Thank you. And Candidate Balgman.
So, I have a varied background. I, I'm a former teacher. I taught high school in Downers Grove many years ago. I, for my masters, I actually researched educational practices, and that's what my thesis is on. I have since diverged professionally from education, and I'm currently a researcher. So I work with, I work with data every day, and I look at numbers and figure out what the stories they're telling me. So I think it helps me to have that foundation in education, but it also, I look at the data that we're getting in terms of how we're performing, how our programs are doing, and it helps me understand what's really going on and make data-driven decisions, which I think is what we need to do. Look at, look at facts and research and understand where we can move forward.
Thank you very much. We'll begin the next question with Candidate Hernandez. And for that question, I invite Alan to come on up.
Hi, my name is Alan. I am a seventh grader here at Lehman Middle School. And my question for you today is, what do you see as the major issues facing your school district?
One of the biggest issues that I see is parent engagement. I really feel that it would be a huge benefit to have parents come more to board, to board member meetings. And I know it's hard, because we have a lot of great parents who sometimes have two jobs, so I know it's very hard for them to attend those meetings. But I feel that if we could make, I don't know, think of three families, and they come in, and we invite them, and we talk about, you know, what do you guys do at home? And we get to learn about what they have going on. And then not only do we get to know our community, but then we also get to see if they need something, if there's something that we need to work on. I really feel that would be a big, big thing, just parent engagement.
Thank you. Candidate Balgman.
So I 100% agree that we need more community engagement and parent engagement in our schools, in our board meetings, in our district committees. Like, we need to get more voices in and more people engaged in providing us feedback. I don't know how we do that. We've been brainstorming for a long time. I've had conversations with a lot of people, and I know we've tried a lot of things. So I would love to hear more solutions and ideas about how we actually get parents and family members and community to engage. And what, as a board, what we can do in terms of outreach and get more people to understand what the work is that we're doing and how it impacts their kids. So I do agree, that's 100% one of the biggest issues. I think academic achievement for me is a huge thing, if you look at our test scores. Like, we don't have kids at grade level yet. And we do a lot of work, and I know we grow our kids more than one grade a year, and we've got a lot of good things in place, but we really need to, like, get going.
Thank you. And Candidate Frye.
I'm going to agree with both of you as far as parents' involvement. Not only in just the board meetings, because I've been to board meetings and have been the only one sitting in the audience, when you're like, where are the rest of the parents? We need parents to come in, and we need parents to share information. I'm also part of the Citizens Advisory Committee, which there's not very many parents involved in that, and we need that. We need parents to come in, and we need to know what you want from our school district and from what, from our teachers, and how they can help you, and how we can help your kids, and teachers can help. We need a lot of parenting involvement. We don't have it in our district, and that's sad, because these are our kids, these are our future. And the only other thing that, you know, I look at is safety within our schools and getting kids involved with officers. Again, my husband is an officer, and I think that if we can get kids interacting with officers and trusting officers along with our teachers and administrators, if we make that connection with them, I think then we'll have more of the see something, say something.
Thank you very much. Our next question, we'll begin again with Ms. Balgman. And that question is, "What measures could or should the board take to improve on the 2022 school climate survey results?"
Okay, that's an interesting question. I think we have taken measures this year. I know that, well, I sit on the Faculty Advisory Council, and one of the things that we're studying with that is how to create more collaborative environments for our teachers. So that's one of the things that came up. I can't tell you what else came up in that study. Like, I don't have the data memorized and the results, so I just know that one, because I sit on it and we're working on it. I'm sorry, there's a lot of data in the world in that one, I just don't know.
Candidate Frye.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Sure. "What measures could or should the board take to improve upon the 2022 school climate survey results?"
I'm going to be honest, I have not seen anything on the climate survey, so I can't answer that, to be honest.
And Candidate Hernandez.
I am on the same page, I do apologize.
No problem, no problem. All right. I want to invite our next student questioner to come and join us. And we'll start with Candidate Frye for this question.
Hello, my name is Chase. I'm in seventh grade. And my question today is, "What can or should the board be doing, in your opinion, to increase student achievement in the district and close achievement goals, or gaps, sorry?"
I think that, I think as a district, we just need to look at children individually to see exactly where we need to bridge the gaps, as far as if we need to bring other sources in to help where kids are lacking, or just more, having more, what's the word I'm looking for? Yes, thank you, some more resources for the issues that we're seeing, or if children are having, so.
Candidate Hernandez.
Yeah, I'm going to elaborate with that. I feel that each student is different, and therefore if the teachers can give us that knowledge that they might need more reading, maybe we can mentor them to either, we can have a program that, you know, they can tutor them in, or if we feel like they need to be challenged more, then I hope that we can do that too, so we can have the students do the best.
Thank you. And Candidate Balgman.
So I 100% agree that we need like a differentiated education, where we're meeting each kid where they're at. I think we try to do that, we work really hard at doing that today, but, you know, teachers have a spectrum this much in their classroom. And so I think we also need to give a lot of support to the teachers, help them collaborate more, figure out how to work with all the kids in their, in their classroom. You know, our teachers are great, and they're doing the best they can. I think we can just support them more to deliver that differentiated education.
Thank you. We'll begin the next question with Candidate Hernandez. And that question is, "What proposals are being addressed to increase teacher retention and promote diversity among the staff?"
Can you repeat that?
Certainly. "What proposals are being addressed to increase teacher retention and promote diversity among the staff?"
That's a hard question, too.
That is a, well, let me see. I'm going to ask you to repeat it one more time, I'm so sorry.
Certainly. "What proposals are being addressed to increase teacher retention and promote diversity among the staff?"
We want to make sure that we acknowledge the community that we live in. So we really have to know our community before we can do that. So hopefully, you know, teachers and, and students and all the staff are really getting to know each other, so we can really understand each other. So teachers can really do the best that they can for each student. I hope I'm answering that correctly.
Certainly. Candidate Balgman.
So I think increasing teacher retention, a lot of it, we have good retention rates. We're comparable to the other districts in our county. So I think a lot of it is about the environment. You know, every employee wants to stay in a good working environment. So we need to provide them as much support as possible to do their jobs. Their jobs are hard. So as much support as we can give them, as much professional development, more staffing to help with all the different kids, you know, things like that. And I think we also need to really empower them to have a voice in the direction of our district, to be leaders and make a difference in our schools, in our district. Because the more empowered they are, the more vested they are, and the more confident they are in terms of their ability to guide kids to success, to really make sure that they're going where we want them to go.
Candidate Frye.
I would agree with you on that, Rita. I think empowering our teachers is what's going to get us to keep our teachers and get them to be vested in our school districts. The more we support our teachers, and the more that we give them, empower them to do their jobs, the more likely we're going to keep them here.
Great, thank you. We'll begin the next questioning with Miss Candidate Balgman again, and I invite our next student questioner to come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Zach Colloy. I'm, I go to Lehman here, I'm in seventh grade. And my question is, what is one way you want to help the school?
Narrow it down to one.
Leave it to the kids to ask the tough ones, right?
It's a hard question. I don't know. Yeah. I think, there's a lot of thoughts. I think one of the things that I really enjoy doing, and that I think helps the district, is I'm part of multiple advisory committees. So I sit on the Citizens Advisory Committee, the Faculty Advisory one, the Student Advisory one, which I know Alex is on as well. And I think one that helps me gain perspectives and listen to a multitude of voices, and so I think that helps me improve in general by hearing a wider spectrum and more perspectives to make better decisions.
Candidate Frye.
Can we repeat the actual question?
Would you like to repeat your question?
What is one way you want to help the school?
One way I want to help the school is by helping create an environment that kids feel safe and enjoy coming to school, and know that they can be here and have their friends here, and have people to support them here and work with them. I think creating a safe environment for kids to come to helps them to grow.
Thank you. And Candidate Hernandez.
How I want to help students, or what I want, what I think is best, is what I'm doing right now. This is all new to me. I am doing something that probably is a little uncomfortable, but I'm doing this because I care about the future. I care about the students, because you guys are our future. So I just, I have to do my best to do my part. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. We'll begin the next question with Candidate Frye. And this is the question, "What are the board's plans to increase communications to parents and community members, particularly around the redrawing of school boundaries with the closing of Pioneer School?"
That's a hard question.
Yeah. Repeat that one more time, I'm sorry.
Certainly. "What are the board's plans to increase communication to parents and community members, particularly around the redrawing of school boundaries with the closing of Pioneer School?"
I don't even know how to answer that.
How do you think they should communicate?
How do I think they should? How should they communicate closing Pioneer?
Well, the question is about communication in general, but they use that as a specific, so...
As far as communication goes, I think they should hold, just like they do a board meeting, they should hold a meeting to have parents in there, to ask questions and be able to communicate their own concerns for the closing of Pioneer. I think bringing, trying to get parents, again, we need all the help we can get parents into meetings, but have parents come, so that the board can communicate exactly what's going on with Pioneer and how this is going to affect their kids and the students in all the different schools. So I would say bringing in, doing a meeting.
Okay, thank you. And Candidate Hernandez.
I feel like they have to be extremely transparent. This is a big deal. That means that classrooms are going to be more filled. Parents are probably very concerned, you know, if we, we don't want to add more to our teachers, because we want to keep them in the, in the district. So I feel like we also have to keep all that in mind, but parents are probably very concerned. I would say write more letters, have more meetings, hold, let parents talk about their concerns, because it is, it is a big deal. This is going to, this is going to affect a lot, a lot of people, not just the students, but like, it's just, it's really big. When you close down a school, how many kids are going to be in that class? How is it going to affect them? What about the students who have, that are in the special ed program and need more resources? How are we going to handle that? Are other schools, do we have the building size enough for them? I think it's a really big deal, so I feel like they should be very transparent.
Thank you. And Candidate Balgman.
So I think we are holding meetings. I think we're being as transparent as possible. There's extensive presentations on how it's going to affect and why the decisions were made. I think that in terms of like redistricting and the boundaries, those decisions actually haven't been made yet in terms of how the students are going to be split and where they're going to go, and it's very, so it's kind of interesting, like, we're still in flux, right? So I think, basically, I think we do need to be as transparent as possible. There's a lot of information that is shared in board meetings. It's in all the board packets, which every community member can go onto our website and get and read or watch at any point in time. I think that, like, maybe, maybe we can do a better job of distilling some of the, like, things that happen in board meetings, and instead of, like, give parents like a one, two, three, this is the decisions that were made, or the topics that were talked about. I don't know. I agree with transparency, I agree with meetings. I welcome any conversation and engage in dialogue with any parent at any point in time, so we can talk through, like, why decisions are, they are, are the way they are.
Thank you. We'll start the next questioning with Candidate Hernandez, and for that, I invite our next student questioner.
Hello, my name is Alor Ruiz. I'm in seventh grade, and my question for you today is, what is your first, what do you first want to accomplish when you get this role?
What's the first thing you'd like to accomplish when you get this role?
I really want to learn what else I could do to get parents to come. I feel like that is my biggest thing that I want to do, just because I do go around and I talk to a lot of parents. And we always talk about, you know, the schools and the situations. I feel like my first task would be like, honestly, you need to come. That would be like the very first thing that I would do.
Thank you. Candidate Balgman.
It's a hard question, because I currently sit on the board, and so we have a lot of things in progress, right? Like, we're in the middle of a whole bunch of things. So I don't actually know how to answer that question. I think, please.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. It's still a hard question. We don't work on one thing at a time. I think my priorities continue to be like working on academic achievement and making sure we're moving forward, continuing to empower our teachers, continuing to figure out ways to engage our community. So those are things that we're in the midst of, that I'd like to continue pushing forward.
Thank you. Candidate Frye.
I think, starting off, I think I would want to get the community engagement going, and I would also want a clear view of communication. Right now, our school district has a lot of different ways to communicate in our schools and through the district, and different websites, and different apps. And I think one thing would be trying to figure out an easier way for parents to come together and find the information that they're needing a lot easier.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll start, begin the next question with candidate Balgeman, and that is one from me. What criteria will you utilize to determine budget priorities?
I think the, the basis of any decision-making is what is best for the students in the district. So that, that's, that determines budget priorities. Like what can we do that's really the best for kids? And, and, and moves them forward.
Candidate Frye?
As far as the budget goes, I would say looking at the budget that is already in plan right now. And then going forward as to what will, what will do the best for our students first. Our students always come first and then look and see what our teachers need. Because without our teachers, we're not going to make great strides with our students. So I would say.
Okay, thank you. And candidate Hernandez?
I would depend on student needs, depending on what we see our students need. That's what I would put our focus on. And then from there, I would, I would work with administrators or the, you know, the board members to see what would be the best thing and how we should, they would budget.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll begin the next question with candidate Frye, and I invite our next student questioner.
Hi, my name is Ivan Lopez, and I'm a seventh grader here at Lehman. My question is, what role do you feel parents should play into the school environment?
The role I think parents should play into the school environment, I think parents should play a huge role into that. We need to get parents involved. So parents should be involved in every aspect of school, talking to administrators, talking to teachers, having the ability to just have open dialogue with people so that they know what's going on with their students and go from there.
Candidate Hernandez?
I agree with you 100%. I feel like it's our responsibility as parents to be involved with the teachers, with the district in general, and also with community, with the community just in general.
Thank you. And candidate Balgeman?
I mean, absolutely, 100% agree. Like parents need to be involved. They're a key component to their kids' education. They're the ones doing all the work at home, and, and they need to be involved in the, the day-to-day, in the classroom, and, you know, in the school, in the district, everywhere.
Great, thank you. We'll begin the next question with candidate Hernandez, and your question is, when making hard decisions, how do you balance the feedback that you get from the community with what may be, in your view, the best interest of the entire district?
I feel like it's important to grasp onto everything. Just because my view might be different does not mean that their opinion is any less. When you make a decision, you have to look at all the pros, all the cons, how it affects a certain group, how it doesn't affect a certain group, and regardless of how I might feel, because I could be totally wrong and I could be missing the big picture.
Thank you. Candidate Balgeman?
Can you repeat it one more time?
Certainly. When making hard decisions, how would you balance the feedback from the community with what may, in your view, be in the best interest of the entire district?
Yeah, I mean, we face those decisions all the time, right? So I think it's important to listen to the community, to gather perspectives, to hear what's going on, because they might know stuff that I've never thought of. I think that, you know, it, it's student-centered decision-making. So we have to do what's best for the students. That is our first and foremost task. So you have to look at it that way. And, and to know that, like I, as I said before, I use data, right? So it's data-driven decision-making. It's looking at the, the information that tells us really what's going to be the best.
Okay. And candidate Frye?
I would say the, the same thing. You need to take all the information that's available to you. I mean, what one person sees is important, somebody else might not, but you have to weigh out the differences. And you have to take all the information and use that to your knowledge.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I think we're back to candidate Balgeman for the next question to begin. And once again, our next student questioner.
Hi, my name is Jackson Munoz, and I'm a seventh grader. My question is, does the current bullying policy need to be modified to address parents' concerns regarding increased bullying that is occurring within the schools?
Does the current bullying policy need to be modified to address the bullying that's occurring? Is that, I'm sorry, can you repeat it one more time?
Does the current bullying policy need to be modified to address parents' concerns regarding increased bullying that is occurring within the schools?
It's an interesting question. So I think, I think there are many ways to address the bullying that's happening in schools. This was actually a topic that we just talked about at the student advisory committee today, and they had some really great ideas. So I, I mean, we have a, a policy that talks about how we investigate bullying. There's discipline policies that go into effect once, you know, we figure out what's going on. So I, I'm not sure that the policy needs to be changed. I do think that there needs to be more training on what to look for in terms of bullying, because sometimes it can go under adults' radar. And so I think we need to make sure that all of our staff really knows what signs to look for, so that we can better address the bullying.
Thank you. Candidate Frye?
I am not familiar with the bullying policy as it is right now. But I do think that when it comes to bullying policies, we always have to evolve because things are changing all the time. And what's going on is changing all the time. And again, yes, parents are under the radar, parents are, teachers are, adults are. We're not going to see everything. We don't, you know, kids are, kids are secretive. And with everything with TikTok and everything like that, it's, there's a whole nother level of bullying that parents might not be aware of. And I think that we just need to start getting a little bit more educated as to what's going on, and we need to pay closer attention. And if we need to rework the policy, then we need to rework it. But we need to be more educated and be more well-rounded as far as what's going on with kids today.
Thank you. And candidate Hernandez?
When it comes down to bullying, I feel like it's very important, if they call a student down, the parent should be called down as well. Because sometimes they tell the student, but the parents are not aware of what's going on. And I feel that if there's a problem, we need to address it, and it needs to stop. Because things are getting, at least from what I've heard from community members, it has been getting worse. And I feel like it needs, we need to just tighten it up, talk to parents, let them know what's going on. Because it's not just the school's responsibility to keep an eye on the student, it's also the parent's responsibility to talk to the students, to let them know it's not okay to be talking in a certain way or to be saying certain type of comments. We have to work together, school, parents, community, to really stop the bullying.
Thank you. Next question, we'll begin with candidate Frye, and it is, how should the district address and support those students and families needing access to mental health services?
As far as mental health goes, I think, I mean, it should be pretty much open. As far as the district goes, they should be able to, families should be able to talk to your social workers in school and get the information that you need. It should be pretty much open. Since COVID hit and mental illnesses have taken a toll on everybody, I think the resources should be there, and I think there should be probably more resources than we actually have and available, and a better dialogue so that parents know that they can have that help.
Thank you. Candidate Hernandez?
I feel like our family liaisons on District 33 are amazing. I think they go above and beyond. I think they're great programs, even through DuPage County. There are many, many resources out there. There's a lot, even a lot of nonprofit organizations that really do help a lot of families. And as long as we're doing our homework as part of the district to know those programs and to be able to reach out to those programs, I think we can do a good job in communicating that to the families.
Thank you. And candidate Balgeman? Certainly. How should the district address and support those students and families needing access to mental health services?
So I think we do have some mental health services available in schools. We have social workers, counselors, things like that. And we can identify and do some work within the schools, but I, it's, it's not everything, right? We do have family liaisons through our community school program that can recommend and, and network with mental health providers throughout DuPage County and, and provide that link between families who need the resources and the resources that are available.
Thank you. We'll begin the next question with candidate Hernandez, and who is my next student questioner?
Hi, I'm Alex. I'm an eighth grader in Lehman Middle School, and one of my questions is, what's your vision for the educational community?
What's your vision for this educational community?
Like the, like the board?
Well, you'll set the vision as a board member, so, yeah, what do you, big picture, what do you see?
I think that my vision is to have students and teachers show more creativity and empower them to use their creativity to the best, so they can do the best. That's, that's what I vision.
Thank you. Candidate Balgeman?
So I'm on the board and was part of setting the vision.
Setting the vision.
Which you can read right on the wall. I, I think, you know, our, we want to produce students that are going to be good citizens, that are ready for high school and for beyond, that, you know, that are critical thinkers and problem solvers and all of that. So our, our community should be working towards those goals and building towards that. So it's engaging students, giving them voice in their education, making them, empowering them to play a role in what they do. It's empowering teachers, it's empowering administrators, so that we can, we can get our students where we want them to be.
Thank you. And candidate Frye?
My vision would be as far as creating a school environment to have well-rounded students coming from District 33, giving them the knowledge and creativity and power to become great humans, so.
Thank you. I have a question that was handed to me before we started, and so we'll be back to candidate Balgeman. How do you define success?
Well, in terms of our district or just in general?
I think so.
So I, I think I define, I define success when, you know, we meet our goals. We set our goals and we achieve our goals, when we are working collaboratively, when we're, when our students are ready for the next step and they're, and they're engaged and, and, and working hard, right? So I, I think, you know, we have goals set throughout the district at every single level, and I, I would like to see us achieve those goals.
Thank you. Candidate Frye?
Can you repeat yours?
Sure. How do you define success for the district?
Success would be just having, again, meeting goals and having our kids reach their goals and achieve their goals and achieve what they're doing, along with having our teachers achieving goals, because we need them to work with us, so.
Okay. Candidate Hernandez?
How do I view success? I would say I view it like a ladder. There are all these little steps that we have going on, and each one is one little step. We did one goal. We go to the next, and each, you know, it's like when you see a, a class graduating from eighth grade, that's a success. You see a student who is finally able to talk in front of a whole class and not be afraid, that's a success. So each, that's the way I see success. It's like a ladder.
Thank you. Do we still have any more students to, we've got two more. All right, great. And we start with candidate Frye this time.
Hi, my name is Jose, and I'm an eighth grader here. And my question is, when making hard decisions, how would you balance the feedback from the community with what may be in the best interest of the entire district?
You get a chance to answer that one again, or do we want to, because that one was already asked. So why don't we bring up our next gentleman? We're actually doing a great job of getting through the questions tonight, so.
Hello, my name is Caesar, and my question is, how should the district address and support the students and families?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, how should the students, how should the district address and support those students and families?
How should the district support students and families?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, the district, I think the district is very supportive of our families already. But I mean, just communication and, and listening to what our kids need and what our families need, and if there's services that are needed. As long as the district can listen and provide, that would be it.
Thank you. Candidate Hernandez?
I would say based on students and families' needs, that's how the school can, can support each family.
And candidate Balgeman?
I mean, yeah, I think we meet students and families where they're at and try to take away as many barriers to an academic achievement that we can. So we provide them the resources and the support they need to be successful.
Thank you. Have all the students had an opportunity to ask their questions? We have any questions left from the students? That's great. We've asked all of our questions. That rarely, we rarely do that. I think it's because the students did such a good job, don't you guys? Yeah. Well, before we go to closing statements, I'm sure the candidates will make themselves available for specific questions that maybe we didn't ask that you brought with you this evening. So we'll, we'll leave that open for the end. So it's now, now time for closing statements. We made you go first, so we'll ask candidate Frye to go first this time with your closing statement.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and all the great questions. I am hopeful to be a part of the district, whether it's on the board or not. I plan on putting my input out there and listening to friends and family and teachers and people who are working with my kids to try and help change our school district, to make it better, to make kids feel more involved and everybody just have more of a say in our district. I'm, again, very big on the safety of our school, both inside and out. I want kids to love where they're at and feel comfortable where they're at, and, and parents to be more involved. So thank you again.
Thank you. Candidate Hernandez?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for being here, and again, just simply say I'm in a great place in my life right now where I speak to a lot of parents. And, you know, whether it's in soccer and cheer, I feel that I can bring a lot of feedback to the board from parents, whether it's negative or positive. I have the background from working in District 94, and if I'm part of the board, I would be very happy to contribute all, all my knowledge that I, that I have.
Thank you. And candidate Balgeman?
So I, thank you. This was awesome that we got to discuss all these things and all the kids came and asked questions. I think that was fantastic. So I, you know, I think I bring a lot. I'm a really hard worker. I have data, I'm data-driven. I, I'm, I listen and I seek perspective. You know, I'm willing to engage any parent or community member anytime in a conversation, right? About what's going on, or students. I'll talk to you guys. We can have a conversation about what's going on and how we can make our district a better place. And so I'm, I've, I've enjoyed my last four years. I think we've done some really good work, and I think our district does some really great things. And I, I would love to be part of just continuing our progress and moving forward toward our goals.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please join me in thanking the candidates for being with us this evening. Our democracy thrives when all of us are engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum, as you have done, is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on Election Day. We hope that each and every one of you will vote and get all your family and friends and neighbors to do the same. Local elections are very important. Information on how and when to vote can be found, Barb, help me out.
On the League of Women Voters.
Right. Vote, is it Vote 411?
Vote 411.
Okay, it says 44 here, so I wanted to make sure I was right. So vote411.org, the League of Women Voters website, or your local county election commission website. So that's the DuPage Board of Elections. We hope you'll either take advantage of early voting, of which there are many opportunities out there, or vote on April 4th. Thank you very much for being here. And thanks to the candidates.